Dave Schmidt.
Present.
I am present. Mark Lochner.
Present.
And Darren Olson.
Present.
All right, I'm gonna read the titles, then we'll just go into nominations. So President ensures integrity of the Board's process. Accordingly, the President has the following authority and duties. We'll skip over that stuff, just gonna read the titles. Vice President performs all duties legally assigned to the office and assumes the duties of the President in the event he or she is absent or unable to act. The Clerk performs all statutory duties and assumes the duty of the President in the event of the absence or inability to perform of both the President and Vice President. Treasurer slash Deputy Clerk performs all statutory functions of the Treasurer, acts in the absence inability to perform of the Clerk, and acts in the absence inability to perform of all other officers. And the last role is, and I wrote it down, it was Director, right?
Yes.
Director. So with that, Terry, I'll have you start the reorg of the officers.
All right, so at this time, I'd like to call for a nomination for Office of the President.
I nominate Cody, Second.
All right, there's been a nomination for Cody. There's been a motion and a second. Are there any other nominations for President? Are there any other nominations for President? Are there any other nominations for President? Okay, there's a motion on the floor for Cody to be President and a second. Let's do it, roll call vote. Just, I didn't write that down, but was that Mark that made the motion?
Second, second.
David.
Motion, no, second.
Okay, thank you. Okay, roll call vote. Cody Progowski.
Yes.
David Schmidt.
Yes.
Mark Lochner.
Yes.
Darren Olson.
Yes. All right, thank you, gentlemen. We'll carry on now to the Board Vice Presidents. Calling for a nomination for Vice President.
Nomination.
A second.
You got a first and a second.
The senior was sleeping.
Senior was sleeping.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations? And any other nominations? None. So then, congratulations, David Schmidt, Vice President for the Board.
We gotta vote to no.
Uh, yes.
It is a vote of confidence at least.
Can we do unanimous consent on this, or do we have our own rule?
Oh, Cody, this is for a roll call.
Okay.
Cody Progowski.
Yes.
David Schmidt.
Yes.
I vote yes. Mark Lochner.
Yes.
Darren Olson.
Yes.
Congratulations. Now we're heading out to the Board Clerk. I am calling for a nomination for Clerk.
I nominate Pat Breschowski.
I'll second that. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? And any other nominations? We'll go into roll call vote now for Pat.
Cody Progowski.
Yes.
David Schmidt.
Yes.
I vote yes. Mark Lochner.
Yes.
Darren Olson.
Yes.
Congratulations, Pat. Heading out over to Board Treasurer now, I'm gonna call for a nomination.
I nominate Darren Olson.
I second that.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations? And any other nominations? We'll head into a roll call vote.
Cody Progowski.
Yes.
David Schmidt.
Yes.
I vote yes. Mark Lochner.
Yes.
Darren Olson.
Yes. All right, congratulations, Darren. We will now head into Appointing. So CISA five.
I've served as that representative for a number of years and I've already been a, they've already got my name down there, so, and I'm going on. This week, I think it is.
Perfect. Um, we don't, we don't do any, uh, roll.
That's it, the next one.
Okay, perfect. So yep, David, I could keep you on there. How many other conversations for that?
Is there any, like, anything that we would need an alternate representative for something like that?
Not really.
Okay.
If the, if the representative doesn't show, it's not a big deal. They, they have to have a quorum of the district, of the districts that's in the CISA to do it. And a lot of times, there's not a full group of people there, and they still have a quorum, so we don't need, need an alternate.
Okay. Good question, though. But we will need some on the next ones coming up, so Personnel Committee, previously it was Mark and myself. Mark, you still want Personnel?
I'll stay in Personnel.
And I can stay on there too unless any of, any of you guys had any interest in Personnel Committee. Okay, so we will keep myself and Mark Lochner on there moving forward. The WASBA delegates.
I've been doing that as well, and I will do that unless somebody else has a desire to do it.
Go ahead, tell us a little bit about what you do.
The representative for the delegate is, sits in on the Delegate Assembly at the, at the convention in Milwaukee. And they vote on ideas that boards from around the state put forth that they want the lobbyists to, to take to the state to lobby for. There's usually four or 400 people in that room that, that are voting for these things. And it's, it's more time consuming than anything really. So, yeah, and it, it's kinda interesting because the people that are putting forward these ideas, these thoughts, get pretty passionate about what they're presenting. And so the discussions can get pretty heated sometimes. And sometimes they're not, sometimes it goes right through real fast. Sometimes the people will argue and build amendments to these things. And it's just a, can be kinda funny to watch. It's, it's an interesting thing. And it's the process that we have to get to the state representatives in Madison.
So the lobbyists.
The lobbyists, yeah. The lobbyists take what we decide, and they take it to the representative in Madison and try to get their wish, wish fulfilled.
Well, thank you, David, for volunteering again on that. We're, we're happy to have you on there, so. And the Next Buildings and Grounds Committee, previously was Pat and myself. I enjoy being on this. Pat, do you want?
I know, I knew.
Penny?
I'd be interested if you guys did want to.
Or we could add Yellen too.
Yeah, we can add a third, right? We can.
We just can't set any policy when we get together, but.
Perfect, awesome. So we got you three down. Then lastly, we have our Policy Committee, previously was Mark and Darren, I believe, correct?
Yeah, I'll do that again.
Okay.
Hey, we do have some policy that we need to work on.
Mark, you, you good with that too?
Yeah.
Okay, awesome. Perfect, so we got, we got those appoints moving forward. The last thing here is the Bank Depositories from Lynn Knights. And actually, I think there's.
And she is not with us, she's in Colorado at her convention on vacation, so.
I thought there was something in here to read. Oh, yes, yes. So it is Lynn's recommendation that the following public depositories for the 22, 23 fiscal year be forwarded to the School Board for Approval. Accusative Port Edwards St. Bank, Wisconsin Investment Series Cooperative. It's through the Public Depositories of Chapter 34 of Wisconsin Statutes. And it just states the district and the funds for a kind of time will be deposited at the following described accounts. And they'll be open and maintained in the name of the district with the bank subject to the rules. And so again, that was an Accusative Port Edwards and Wisconsin Investment Series Cooperative. And I don't know if you wanted to add anything, Darren, to this?
No. No, that would be great. Accusative Port Edwards has been our bank for a long, long time. And also the investment cooperative has been part of what we do for a long, long time. They help us with the law, more, the longer term bonds and things, that's where we use that.
So I.
Good choices.
So with the conversations, I'm gonna look for a motion to approve the Bank Depositories.
Sure.
We got a first and a second. Wait, so where's the first?
Second.
I'll second.
Someone seconded, I heard it somewhere. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried.
I'll go with Darren, Darren, that's easier to spell.
Um, and the last thing is to set the monthly board meeting dates. I know we discussed.
Well, I was wrong. There is that discussion.
Is that okay?
I thought we were, I thought we did the dates at the organizational.
No, I saw on the.
Or at the.
Annual?
Annual meeting. So this is a good time to talk about.
Sure, yeah, I know that we've been discussing Wednesdays due to athletics, sports, summer coming up throughout the week, so discussions, having it on Wednesdays each month. Any conflicts?
For it, what I wanna know is can we also have
The workshop?
The workshops on the Wednesday before.
I was assuming that, yeah, that they would be going, so.
Well, it's Thursday, Tuesday, and that's why I wanted to bring that up.
Yeah.
Man, it really interferes with practices.
Oh, yeah, no.
It makes for long days on those days, you know?
Board shops on Wednesdays and then followed a week later with the, the board meetings, so.
Yeah, that works really well.
Because during the school year, even if you do have practice, early release practices earlier.
Right, you got time. Well, like their showcase tonight at the middle school, so. Wednesday nights are usually pretty clear.
The board meeting will be the second Wednesday.
Yep, and the workshop will be the first Wednesday.
First Wednesday.
Yep.
Okay.
Well, no. Well, which way you wanna do that? Cause what happens if there's not? The second Wednesday, I guess that'll work, yeah, 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 yeah.
It's just a matter of whether.
If the first is on a Thursday, it's just the seventh is the first Wednesday.
Yep, that's right.
Right, it just extends, it makes it go into the middle of the month a little further.
Yeah.
Well, that works really good because there's just, there's not as much going on at the school.
Right. So, yeah, but.
And like for me, that, I wouldn't be helping on Wednesdays or reffing or anything, so that frees up.
So this'll happen in June? Yeah.
Yeah, I'll start in June. And we don't, I don't see a motion or anything on here, so I guess we're just going with our.
Do we have to make a note? How much notice do we have to give to the public just during the polling then, right?
24 hours, right?
Yeah.
I would assume the right of posting.
Yeah.
Time.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Well.
Yeah, that'd be great.
We are only 12 minutes in, but I guess we can.
We don't have to vote on it. I don't have a vote on it. We just decide what this one, we wanna do it. It's just for us anyways, we're the only one.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think technically Cody would get to decide what day that is for President.
Yeah, that'll work just fine for me too, so county board meetings are on Tuesdays as well, so it.
Oh, frees that up.
Yeah, it really frees stuff up for me, so. All right, so I'll just look for a motion to adjourn. Got a first and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none.
Sorry.
I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Get the day going here.
Roll call?
Yep.
Cody Progowski.
Present.
David Schmidt.
Present.
Mark Lochner.
Present.
Darren Olson.
Present.
I am present.
Those that are able, please stand in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're gonna head into our virtue card reading.
Perseverance. Perseverance is being steadfast and persistent. Commit to your goals and overcome obstacles no matter how long it takes. When you persevere, you don't give up, keep going like a strong ship in a storm. You don't become battered or blown off course, you just ride the waves. You're practicing perseverance when you choose your commitments wisely, set goals and stick with them until completed. Pace yourself and take one step at a time. Don't let doubts or tests blow you off course. Stand by your friends and loved ones. Affirmation, I have perseverance. I finish what I start. I keep a steady pace at what I choose to do. I am loyal and committed. Perseverance. Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, Pat. Board of Education guidelines with an open mind will establish an atmosphere that allows expression of all views, even when views are not in line with all members, being respectful of time. We will work collaboratively with the District Administrator by having open and honest conversations around district priorities. We will work collaboratively with all stakeholders to monitor key indicators so that ethical teaching and learning results in high achievement. We will work in building a trusting environment where both students and staff can reach their full potential in celebrating successes in academics, the arts, and athletics. Public comments. During the public comment period of the agenda, the Board welcomes comments from the public of any item not on the agenda. Please know that pursuant to state law, the Board cannot engage in conversation with you but may ask questions. The Board may refer the item to staff, a standing committee, or a future agenda for discussion and action. Each person wishing to speak will have to three minutes to speak. Speakers are asked to provide their name, address, and topic for discussion. I don't see anyone in here tonight, but.
Elena. Elena, no.
All right. We'll, we'll skip over that for the night then. We'll head into showcasing schools and student learning. CWSA update, but I believe.
Right, she's not here. And the middle school is doing their showcase tonight, so that's where Nathan is.
All right, just take my time reading, I guess.
And the overarching results, we're gonna be touring the tech ed after our meeting.
All right, cruising along here. Nathan Swenson, who is here tonight, will give us an update. How's the school year going? Athletics, academics, how did prom go?
All went pretty good. We're winding down here according to our countdown. Seniors have 12 days left to school, so.
Wow.
I think our grades, looking forward to that. We had a busy spring. 20th of last month was the top 10 banquet for the SCC Conference. April 23rd was prom at Arrowhead. Think they had pretty good reviews from juniors and seniors on that. I think, I think it's the first time it's been held offsite in a number of years. Scholarship night for seniors is tomorrow. Reeves Awards banquet will be next week, the 18th. Spring sports finally have some good weather for us. It's not freezing anymore. Our next blood drive will be June 28th from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.
At Humke.
At Humke, yep. The gym floor at the high school is getting resurfaced. FBLA will have their, send three competitors to the National Leadership Conference from June 28th to July 3rd. It'll be Brandon Swenson, Elizabeth Klauston, and myself to compete in three different events there. April 30th, FBLA and National Honor Society held Princess Prom at the high school. That was the first time they held that in two years. We had over 100 little girls and their dads show up.
Wow.
It was.
Awesome.
Pretty fun. We had some people making balloon animals, face paint, nail paint. And it was, it was nice to have that again after not having it for two years. National Honor Society will be heading to Humke on the 20th to help with the bike rodeo. I think it's been a year or two since we've been able to have that. Sometime in the next couple weeks, we'll be planting flowers outside the high school as part of our school beautification project. And on the 22nd, the juniors that are part of team leaders around the area will be cleaning gravestones. Some students will be helping with that, gravestones for veterans for Memorial Day. And that's what's happening at the high school. Other than that, today will be my last update to you all. It's been a great two years to been here. I'm incredibly grateful for that opportunity. Think it's a good thing to have a student here. I've learned quite a bit. Probably know more educational acronyms than a student should. So I'm grateful that our district provides that opportunity. And while they were not able to be here tonight, our new president will be Alexa Borboom. She's a sophomore, soon to be a junior. And Ryder will be our Vice President, also a sophomore, soon to be a junior. I would believe in June, they should be here, one or both of them. And moving meetings to Wednesdays will be quite, be very helpful with that for sports and whatnot, like you had said. And we're looking forward to what Student Council does at the high school next year with those two and the rest of our new executives, so.
Awesome.
That is all I have.
Sounds like a lot of great things going on in the district. And from the Board, we wanna thank you for the past two years, all your time and effort in coming to meetings and dealing with COVID and showing up here and all that stuff, so.
Where's the National FBI gonna be at?
It rotates between Baltimore, Orlando, Atlanta, Salt Lake City, Anaheim, and this year it's in Chicago.
Chicago.
Chicago. Chicago.
Couldn't have been Salt Lake City.
Nah, you're here.
Awesome, well, thank you very much, Nathan. Athletic programs update.
Tonight, we do not have a, an update. But it, it sounds like volleyball. Keith, if you go work with Paul on that.
I work with him on that.
Yep, it was the one that we've missed, right? Have we had cross country?
In cross country.
Cross country, yes.
Okay, other than that, I think we covered all of them, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
All right, Brian Grill, Director of Student Services.
All right. So I have, I'm presenting this way, I'm not doing it full screen because as you can see, my computer's being glitchy and connecting and reconnecting. So, um, last month I told you that I was gonna present. Every school gets a accountability report card every single year. Now, two, what has changed in the last few years, special education gets one as well. So I wanted to share how we're doing on our special education department report card. What are some trends we're seeing and how is this influencing that, the work that we're doing with our special education teachers? So just to provide you a little bit background. So in 2017 is when the federal government really started saying, are students with disabilities, special education is more than just a compliance department. Are you writing IEPs while you're submitting all your reports? They're saying we truly have to start looking at how are our results for students with disabilities? Because there had been many court cases at the federal level that had gone to circuit courts stating, what is adequate progress for a student with a disability? So they said, we need to work into our accountability more than just paperwork. How are they doing in reading? How are they doing in math? And are we working on closing that gap? So at the federal level, they named this as the results-driven accountability measure. They allowed states to name it what they wanted. Wisconsin decided to take a spin on it where they said, reading drives achievement. Still RDA, so if you ever hear that acronym, it's the same thing. It's just a bad spot. One more acronym.
One more, thank you. That'll impress somebody.
But that's where I was like, it's the same thing, it's just called two different things depending on who you talk to. Um, so what does this mean? So the report card for special education has two main parts. The first one is compliance, and that's just, hey, are you doing your legal paperwork? Are you submitting all of your reports? Are you doing your evaluations in a timely fashion? And also too, part of that compliance that you'll see here in a little bit is, are you looking at your evaluations? Cause I always come to you in August and say, hey, we look at our evaluations. Are you over identifying boys versus girls? Are you over identifying one race compared to another in disability categories? So they monitor that to make sure we are not discriminating or creating a disproportionate representation of students. The second part, this was the new part, they're really saying results. How are our results for students with disabilities? So in another slide too coming up, this is where they say, what are our graduation rates? What's our test participation rates? How are kids doing on the test? And then two, they also look at our educational environment to say, are students with disabilities included in the general education classroom? We get a score on that. And those are the things they're looking at and saying, are you making efforts to close that gap in learning between students with disabilities and students without? So on the report card, you really fall into four areas. This is similar to the school report card. Are you meeting requirements? Do you need some assistance? Do you need intervention, or do you need substantial intervention? Those are the four category areas that you would fall into. This goes into just all the different areas of compliance. Like I said, it's timely evaluations. Am I submitting my preschool reports? Am I submitting my post-secondary reports for our high school kids? All those things saying, hey, are you doing your paperwork? Then the second one, like I said, those are the areas they look, look into. And for both of these areas, you can earn up to two points in each area, and they have cutoffs. So it's zero, one, or two you get in all of these areas. Now for us, how have we done as a district? Since this has all started, we have met requirements up until this last school year, and I'll dive deeper into it. But we've always been in, hey, you are meeting requirements, you're doing what you need to do. We are seeing success with our students, which is great because this is also something on the last slide, you'll have a link to. This is public record. When families are looking at school districts for if they have a student with disability, they can see, how are we doing as a district? Are we meeting requirements? But this year, so if you break down the data, compliance, the compliance area, we have, all the years they've been doing it, we have earned all of our points as a district. That to me, what I've always said to our special education team, you control your controllables. Paperwork is something we can control. So not being laid on evals by submitting reports. I said that compliance area should be at 100% because those are our controllables. And our staff has done amazing with that. That consistent through all of our report cards, we've gotten every point possible. The one that we lost some points this year, and I'll explain why in a little bit, is the results area. There was potentially 16 points we could get, and we got seven. And that is out of the norm, but I wanna explain why. So our areas of strength are edit environment of are our students with disabilities in the general education classroom and receiving their services there. We have, ever since the high school did the spending grant a few years ago, we worked really hard to include our students with disabilities within the general education class. And this is an area that has assisted not just, it helps our students in their learning, but it's also helped us on the report card end. And we do, we did this even before this was becoming a thing. We knew it was coming down the pipe, but it has really helped us. On the EC4K area, that's one area where we have fluctuated every year. Because due to our small size, they also say, hey, early childhood for three-year-olds, are you going into the child's natural environment to provide services such as daycare, their home, things like that? Well, we don't have a ton of daycares in our area. We do work with Head Start, but that's not considered a child's natural environment in the highs of the state. So the, how we're providing resources, we're doing the best we can, being a smaller communicate, community. So this one fluctuates depending on the number. Dropout rate, we have every year only for, looking at just students with disabilities, had zero to one student dropout in, for special education. So we have earned all of our points in saying, you have a low dropout rate, which is great to see. Our areas of improvement though, so for grade accidenters, that's our graduation rate. We have every single year earned all of ours saying, we have a high graduation rate. Two years ago, which is some of the results here that you're seeing, we actually got zero points on our last report card. Because they switched their data collection platform, and there was just a miscommunication between Ann and Carolyn of who put in what date, and since their dates didn't match, they didn't count as a student who graduated as a student with a disability. So that was a simple entry error that we fixed. But Terry and I sat with DPI and they said, the data is what the data is, we're not gonna fix it for you. Even though our graduation rate was at 100%.
So we would've got a two?
So we would've gotten two points, which would have up, increased our percentage greatly.
Yeah, what did you get on that, a zero or a one, or?
Zero.
That was if we had a zero.
Yeah. So, and it was a data entry error. So that one typically we have gotten, but they switched systems on us. And so they didn't have, they didn't, this is the challenge with DPI, they don't always train the best when they roll out these new systems. So they didn't know about that data piece, but we fixed it for next year, so it's already taken care of. One of the other things, test participation. We usually have, get. We usually have get two points because they separate ELA and MAF, so four points total that is. We usually get all four points. We had some families due to COVID not wanting their kids to come in and test, so they opted out, things of that nature. So that's where we lost some points. But one of the area that we were really working hard in, the proficiency scores. How are our kids doing on the state tests? Because there's four points available there as well. On average, we're getting zero to two points. So we have to say, how are we working to really help our students with disabilities increase their ability to do better on the state test?
So what kind of range would they have to be in to get the highest ranking or the highest number? I mean, how?
For the proficiency?
Yeah.
They say, I have percentages, they said, like to get two points. I would have to on average have twelve percent of our students with disabilities scoring in the proficient or advanced range to get two points in ELA. So and.
Yeah, which is hard. Which is hard to get, okay, that's only two points. There's I thought you said four.
But you have the ELA.
Oh, both, yeah, two and two, yeah, okay, yeah.
That's ELA, so yeah, two and two, so I have to, we have to work for our students twelve percent. And they look at students who are testing, so grades three through eleven, and saying, do we have twelve percent of our students with disabilities scoring proficient or advanced?
Where are we at, do you know?
So what we were at this year was five percent. To get one percent, we have to get above eight percent. So and for us with our smaller numbers, that's one or two students to get up to that. So though that's like, that's achievable, we wanna get better and we wanna be higher than that. So we're doing a lot of work and that goes into this, so what are our next steps? So like we for the score wise, Humke is in year two of working with Michelle Amen, who's working with our general ed teachers, to truly hone in their teaching skills of reading. Cause we have some newer special ed teachers. And one thing about the college preparation program, they have a reading course, one. And then you come in and it's like, well, how much reading do you know off of one course? So we're providing professional development to say, A, how do we teach reading? B, how are you progress monitoring, doing running records to know when to make adjustments for students? And starting that at our youngest level. We looped the middle school in this year, and the special education teachers there are also getting reading instruction on how to teach reading better. Um we have great teachers, they're they're excited about this learning. We just had our celebration and they were talking about, I know how to do this, Byron, I know how to do this. It was just good to see them excited about the learning. And then two, next year for math, there is a reading inter- or a math intervention called ABMR, and John can tell me what the that acronym stands for again?
It's Math Recovery.
There we go, it's Math Recovery. Um but special education, K eight, is getting that training to help with the math portion. So we are putting a lot of professional development and learning into our teachers, and our coaches are working with myself as well to say, how are we helping them implement this? So that's one area we're really working to say, how are we getting that proficiency score up to get points in that area? But as for test participation, we're saying, hey, this year when the testing came up, I sent a letter out to families, we sent information out of the importance of getting the test to help influence writing their IP and saying, are you making progress? And by kids simply being back in the building, we have our test participation rate went up as well. So those areas, and like I said, the graduation rate one was a data error. So with us being at a seventy-two this year, do I feel next year we'll be back up into that meet requirements area? Yes, I I have a strong feeling we'll be back up into that meet requirements, but I wanna work on these other things as well to say, I wanna stay there. You know, because that's really good for our district to say, our special education department meets requirements. We're doing really good things. I wanna keep on the compliance side, they're doing great with that. But some of the teaching things of just, hey, how are we making sure we're closing the gap? But if you guys want to, so I'll share this presentation with you. Here's a link as well to, you can see on DPI where, hey, this is where they post our scores. And here's all the indicators that I watch and I'm monitoring year after year to say, how are we doing as a district? But that's public record, so like I said, as people are saying, hey, I have a student with a disability, how is this district doing? It's out there for families to see and review. So I just wanted to put that on there in case you guys wanted to go to DPI.
Sure.
But that's where it breaks down section by section for you.
Yeah, and I wouldn't worry about the gradu- um graduation rate. I mean, do we just have one graduating this year, right, from the high school?
No, we have quite a few graduating graduating this year.
Graduating, okay.
And all of ours that are seniors this year, we're right now having what's called their summary of performance where we're saying, yep, you are on track to graduate, you will be done at the end of this year, and that's part of it.
Is there still a waitlist for um special ed students to get into some of our programming?
For open enrollment this last year, this was the first year we had a few seats open. But in that time, I've been tracking too because we've had students qualify. That are our students here in Nikusa. Therefore, our number of open seats has gone down because some of our own students have now taken those seats because they qualified for special education. So I'm currently in that process, Lynn gave me all the names of students that were applying to get in. Some areas I had open seats, I'm now patch.
Sure, okay.
So it's it's been a change. We're gaining.
Thank you, Brian.
Questions for you guys at all?
Any other questions for Brian?
The one thing I just wanted to let you know too, Project Search graduation is May eighteenth at six P M at the McMillan Library. You are invited every year. We have two students from Nikusa who are graduating from Project Search. And this is a program that helps our students who need additional year vocational training to help build job skills. And it's through their Aspirous River View Clinic. And both of our graduates are graduating with jobs in place. They are, one is employed by QuickTrip and will be working at the old Pritzels once they open. And another one got hired by the YMCA childcare. So it's a wonderful program, these students are excited, and then we actually have two students going next year. And that's one thing that, on a sidebar about the report card, we actually, this is a ding I'm willing to take, cause they technically don't graduate in four years cause we paid for them to go to Project Search and get that. That they actually pump that against us at our graduation rate, saying you have kids who didn't graduate in four years. But this is what's best for kids, I will gladly take that ding. So but this for them, like I said, the two students graduating, they have jobs, they're excited. And it's been a great program for our students with disabilities.
Awesome, no, thank you for your work. I know Project Search is a is a big thing that helps helps them out with just daily learning and.
And where is it, Brian?
McMillan Library.
That's wrap, that's wrap.
Eighteen?
Uh-huh, on the eighteenth at six P M.
It is, it is. And the same night is team leadership graduation.
Awesome, well, thank you again, Brian. Um I know Lynn Knight, our business manager, isn't here tonight, so are we gonna skip over?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, we're skipping over Lynn tonight, we're gonna head into policy governance. Uh GP four, Terry, do you wanna read that for me?
Absolutely. Uh GP four, the board's job includes representation of the district's owners, advocacy for students, responsible stewardship and district leadership through determining and demanding excellent performance. To those ends, the board will concentrate its work on the following. Utilizing active and appropriate strategies to ensure input from students and other stakeholders. Developing written governing policies. Uh ensuring excellent district administrator performance. Ensuring excellent board performance by monitoring uh the board policies. Ensuring that the results are the focus of district performance. And advocating on behalf of the district among the owners and outside the community area organizations.
Awesome, so I know that we um took some time to look this stuff over last week um on our own. Any conversations or discussions that popped up? Um I know we've taken a lot of time, actually almost two days to kind of stop, reflect and kind of work on each other. Um was that February or March that we did this?
March.
March, so. Um and I know our policies are are going well, there's some tweaks that we do here and there, but hoping to discussion, so.
Well, I I just look at it over the last year and I just, I I always just look at these things and I say, okay, how the hell we done?
Sure.
Cause that's where, you know, we only look at it once.
Right.
And it's like, I feel that, yeah, we're doing things the way we, you know, our policy says we're supposed to do them. Are there things that need to be tweaked? Yeah, and that's why we're kind of looking at them, so.
Alright, yeah, no, I agree, we always kind of comb through them each each time we get a chance to, to kind of make them better or or make pros and cons out of them, so. Uh with that, then I'm just gonna look for a motion on the floor to approve, uh GP four.
I'll make such a motion.
Yeah, first.
Second.
Second, of all favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none, motion carry, GP four, you? We're gonna head on over to R four, collaborative and responsible citizens. Terry, do you wanna read that as well?
Sure, so uh the principals had a chance to reflect on this, and certainly lots of information here that you certainly were were open to have a good conversation about. Our floor states that all students are productive and collaborative contributors in the workplace and in society. And it says, further says, students will demonstrate self-confidence and self-respect, taking responsibility for their own actions and able to give and receive constructive criticism. Uh demonstrate a positive work ethic and responsible independence. Communicate effectively, including active listening to understand the opinions and perspective of others in order to develop respectful and mutually supportive relationships. Effectively convey ideas, feelings and beliefs considering content and appropriate context and delivery. Understand and practice the rights and responsibilities of a contributing member of society. And then uh accept personal responsibility for creating worthy outcomes, quality of life and social justice, so that is a tall, tall order in that policy. So uh I don't know, board members, do you have questions or principals can highlight some some maybe new work that's been going on in this past year or struggles that we're currently having in the buildings? But we'd rather entertain your questions.
Yeah, I mean, I'll take one, one good thing and one bad thing, pro and con for each, from each principal, should be good.
Who wants to start? We can popcorn it.
I can start.
Yeah.
Um is it elementary students, aid, you know, thinking about that, really, we're really working on just helping kids to learn to, it always comes back to be responsible or responsible, independent, self-directed students who can self-regulate. And by doing that, that involves a lot of social emotional skills as well, academic skills and and creating a community. So that's just on, and there's really nothing new with that, that's just ongoing work we're doing. Um are there challenges? Nothing that's like, oh my gosh, we're struggling with this. Um that like, we're falling apart on, I would say that that's not a big deal. And in fact, I think we're actually probably in a really pretty good place right now overall when I reflect on that.
So what's one thing though that you'd like to, I mean, the building would like to see improve in this area? Around creating collaborative, responsible citizens?
Just continued, just continued um ability to allow kids to gain more responsible independence and just do that in a way that's developmentally appropriate. And that that was back to what I would say is just instructional practices that we're learning and growing as those teachers.
I have a question.
Okay, that's alright.
Um how I reading here about the um communities within the classrooms at Humke and the uh rules and stuff, how are we doing over there with the classroom rules and how we all deal with those things and disruptions and such?
Good question, you know, definitely, um I just happened to take a look at this the other day. Eighty-eight percent of our kids, and that's out of about three hundred and fifty, so I have to do the math on that. But our zero or one behavioral exists, and that's really pretty good. Um our goal is um eighty, and we're late in the year, that's pretty good, so about uh twelve percent or somewhere other than that. Um and I would say the kids who are probably more frequent and severe, where we put them in the six plus category. Um there's a handful of kids on that, but we have the um resources to figure it out. It doesn't mean that they're easy things to figure out.
Yeah, is that kind of normal from what you've seen over the years? Are you're, are you in that kind of range of average?
I would say in terms of what that is, ideally you wanna have it kind of be like, you know, eighty per, you know, eighty percent, fifteen percent, five percent, and somewhere like at eighty-eight percent, six percent, or like seven percent, five percent. So that's actually pretty good, and we're trending in above average in terms of what we would say those expectations are. But again, like that said, there are there are kids who get a surplus of money, and we're figuring it out and we're helping those kids get what they need.
John, um I'm at four, four point six two. Um you've got in there, uh create communities within the classrooms, here are a few elements, create personal responsibilities. Um can, when I look at that, when I think of that, I also think of, what are the responsibilities that go out to the classroom too, like, I'm gonna take care of this part of thing or this thing? I mean, when I think of it, when I go back to my old days, it was, okay, who's gonna clap erasers today?
We do, and well, we're not clapping erasers.
I know.
That might be Japan. We do, every classroom is part of our social emotional plan.
Okay.
This is a job, but.
Yeah.
By the way, so. Uh is that, is part of our social emotional plan, each classroom has a set of kids, the teachers design jobs because being a part of the community, no, we all play a a part in making sure that the classroom runs. And so kid, there's a, teachers have a list of jobs that go around the room and they rotate them on a routine that works for them. And so, and those jobs vary. Um but that's all part of that responsibility of just seeing the world as something other than just around you and being a part of something bigger.
And and then I also said, you know, the classroom rules, they 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 work cooperatively to set classroom rules?
Yeah.
Does the teacher have an override on this?
Well, you know, you do it in a way that gives kids, we ultimately wanna give students voice.
I see that too, yep.
And so by giving students voice, if they become the teacher's rules, then it's the teacher's responsibility to enforce them. If they become our rules, then we as a class enforce them, and that's what we want, so that's that's what we're looking for.
That's that's kind of behind, okay, very good, thank you.
But and thank you, John, I know that the incidences from, that we talked about a while back have kind of changed and they've slowed down a bit, so I appreciate the work being done on that, so. Uh we look forward to Western Store for the next school year. Um any other questions for, we'll hand on over to AMS then?
Well, I just wanna underscore, you know, we're in a, we're not quite at the eighty-eight percent. It's not, we're closer to the eighty, right in that area, but a piece of that really is that, um certainly there's rules and there's discipline and there's all those type of aspects of it, but it really comes back to this idea of community. And you know, this is one of the things that we're working on right now is the idea of as actively as a and this, I'm gonna throw this under the struggle area because we're just sort of coming up on this is, how do you build intrinsic as opposed to extrinsic motivation? And one of the things as we're looking through that, a real key pivot to that is, do they see themselves as belonging, you know? It's still might be extrinsic, but I'm doing this because it is something, someone that I value and I'm not gonna let them down. Or and that can apply not just to a teacher relationship, but also certainly to a peer relationship. And you know, some existing structures we have across the board that you've heard of at Humke, we've got it at the high school, whatever, is that we have a twenty-five minute period of just advisory where student, where do we teach social skills? How do they learn to interact with each other? How are they talking to each other? How are they going through a number of areas? At the middle school, we, a lot of that structure is like my morning videos are a piece of that. Um but and that allows us to be respect, response, you know, like there is an issue that's coming up that we notice, like for example that, hey, there's a problem of lack of respect in some areas, then we sort of pivot over to that, and that's our area of discussion, and we're working on that just in time as best we can for a while. Um and so those things have been in place for some time. Um one of the things that I have to say that is new this year that, and this is sort of across the board, and the high school's been experiencing too, is our focus on gradual release of responsibility. And you know, and really a lot of that comes, that's in academic areas, but that fits social areas too, that you can't just, we all want students to work intrinsically, independently, all that type of stuff, but it's like trying to go from first year to fourth year, if you just try to move it over through there. And learning how to graduate release and how do you set someone up for success? Signpost what my expectations are and how do I build the skills and, you know, get the safety net, but release it, that's a challenge. And we're not great at it yet, but we're getting better at it. And as, you know, it's been really fun, for example, when. And as, you know, it's been really fun, for example, one element that we've seen is that our teachers, problems grades K, grades six to twelve, have been meeting, um, twice monthly in groups together and video recording their classrooms and showing each other, and how are we doing, and discussing around those aspects. And, you know, right now, we've been focusing specifically for this semester around collaborative work. It really hits right what we're talking here, and it's been fun to watch, the videos have gotten better over the course of the semester. Students, we've got a better feel for it. Now, we've al, we've always been doing elements of this, but the better we can set someone up for it, the better we can sort of help students understand how to rely on each other. That's a culture bit, that's not just a strict skill, but how do we build a, how do we build relationships, how do we build trust? How do we build, work the specific skills that help people succeed the most? Um, where they have to rely on each other, not just get through the, through the task, is, and so certainly many of our practices are still at the beginning stages of that, but that's, that's, that's been a great growth that we've seen with that, because as they, call it a soft skill, if you will, call it, you know, if I'm working in a group with you, um, you might remember it, what it was like in college or whatever else. Usually one, one or two people do the group and everyone else is drafting off of them. And if you just lead students to their own volition, that's how it's, what you're gonna get, that's sort of the default. And so we have to anticipate that, um, work around it and sort of set them up for success in a lot better ways. But that really helps them not just academically, but that also really helps them socially, you know, I'm responsible for the group, not just my own individual part, is really what we're going for there.
Sure.
So, that's, we're, again, not great at it, but we're getting pretty good at it, and that's been fun, and we're gonna watch that keep growing up.
Perfect. Any questions for Nathan?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Um, so after the two years of COVID, did you see that we kind of had to start over with that responsibility release kind of this year? And have we made a lot of progress over the last, whatever months?
I'd say we're like, it's normalizing to to levels we had pre-COVID. And against, I'd say delayed skills, again, these are skilled, these are, if, let me go back to something that's said by a man by the name of Ross Brady, says, if a student does not meet expectations, it's because they don't have the skills to meet that expectation. And some of those skills atrophied when they're working in isolation from each other. And so, and the idea of, and so it's been, yeah, I would have to say that, like I was talking with, actually was a high school math teacher um, in one of our recent areas, and he says, yeah, we finally got our CPM work, and I've heard this from other, um, middle school ones too, that we're we're finally at the level where they're starting to trust each other at the normal level, but we didn't have that beginning of the year, but now we're sort of coming into those. But, uh, that I think partially is that we're intentionally focusing on that skills. And yes, there are skills that atrophy, and there are some students who forgot how, and as a result, their confidence actually too. But it's interesting watching, it's not just the skills are going back up, but the confidence is starting to come back in too, so. But is it ever exactly the same? No, but it's, it's in areas that are closer in that range.
Thank you. Any other questions? Alright, we will head on over to the high school.
I would echo a lot of what, uh, Nathan said, and so I will just, uh, see that side of it and say that we always have child development on our side. That obviously by the time they graduate, you know, Nathan is much different than he was as a freshman, and every freshman student comes in, they change dramatically over the course of four years. Towards this, I will also say that, um, this is a high bar, this, this particular result policy and getting there. Um, it's a constant work in progress, gradual release certainly is one element, CPM is one element, a lot of the other gradual release cuts across all parts. I think the work that Candace does and, I don't know that it'll come up at all, but the wellness breaks has been an element. The pandemic, we certainly, we have seen some setbacks with the pandemic, but I would also say, you know, students had a opportunity to develop responsibility in a way completely different than anything that we ever would have expected or planned. So it's, the pandemic created unevenness is probably a lot of what I would say.
And I'm sure with mental and physical health too, probably attribute to a lot of that, so.
Mental health, please. Mental health is the one that's, yeah, that's the biggest, biggest, biggest challenge.
Any questions for Keith? Awesome, well, thank you all very much, good conversation, so I appreciate that. Um, I guess at this time, just gonna look for a motion to approve R four. So I could, yeah, first and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried for R four, thank you. Alright, we're gonna head into other board work here tonight, our wellness policy, uh, we have Candace in tonight. Terry, do you want to get?
Absolutely, and Brooke. Yes, he's going to do a phone interview with a potential tech guy teacher. So, every year we come together, we look at our wellness policy, and we, every year we need it to be approved, and certainly Candace has, uh, this is, how many years now have you been really focusing? Is this second or third?
I think four.
Four? So since Candace has, uh, taken on the responsibility, we've just, we just keep getting better and better, so. With her tonight is Brooke, who has been a student teacher under Candace and currently is at the middle school. So she's been learning alongside Candace, and they're here tonight to just give us an update, and that we need board approval and moving forward with the wellness policy. So ladies, you have it.
Okay, so with the policy itself, there really isn't any changes, um, currently, because we did go through the big lecture, we went through all the really diving deep into it, we did the audit with them, we got everything sent through DPI, so I mean, we really fine-toothed, combed it last year and got everything set with it. So as far as the policy itself, that's pretty much in place and we're making all that happen. Um, so I'm just gonna share out with you guys what has been happening in wellness this year. We've had a very busy year. Um, first of all, we had started our work, um, last spring with Aspiris Healthcare. Um, and we went ahead and I worked with Aspiris throughout the summer, and what we created is called the Managed Wellness System. And this is an opportunity for all our employees to go ahead and be a part of a wellness portal, do different challenges, different activities, screenings, things like that, to hopefully improve their physical wellness, mental wellness, social, the whole gamut of things. Um, so some of the things that we started off with, oh, and so in our, with our portal, we have, um, seventy-four current registered users out of a hundred and fifty-seven, um, so it was a forty-seven percent, our goal was fifty-four this year, so we were a little bit short. But given that it was a first year and then it kind of was a crazy year with everything going on in life, um, we figured that this was a solid starting point for us. But we started out in October with, um, a biometric screening that Aspiris came in, our main person that comes in, his name is Ryan Beshar. He came in and did that, and we had, um, forty-three people, so fifty-eight percent of our, uh, portal users came in and did screenings. And they went ahead and took height, weight, blood pressure, and then they also did a blood draw. And with the blood draw, they checked cholesterol, their HD, or HDL, their, um, I was supposed to say LDL, my bad there, um, triglycerides and glucose. And, um, so everybody got a full report back on where they're at, what those numbers meant, where did they fall, if they're in a healthy range, not healthy range, and what they could do to hopefully seek improvement. Um, for one staff individual who reached out to me about her results, um, she was just in shock and all, because she had no idea her cholesterol was actually very high. And at a point like that, it was a possibility of a stroke coming on within a short time. Met with her doctor, talked about a plan, revised her, um, eating habits, got her on a medication, things like that, but she had no idea her cholesterol was that bad. And so that biometric screening was absolutely huge for her. Um, so then we went ahead and progressed, um, into what we call the Aloha Challenge. Um, and we did a step challenge for six weeks where we challenged people to try to get fifty thousand steps in six consecutive weeks. Um, and again, we had high participation in that. We did a healthy holiday challenge where each week there is a different educational piece sent out to people. Um, and so the Aloha one was a lot based on physical, obviously, with the step count, but the ho- healthy one was, because it was during the holiday season, was talking about the social, your relationships, the mental and the stress and all, the financial and all that, trying to keep, um, trying to just give tips and ideas with that. Then later in the year, we did what's called an in-body screening, or in-body scanning, excuse me, and so fifteen, we have fifteen open slots for that, and fifteen people did complete that. And so you got to step on this little scale that had, um, different probes on the bottom, and you hang, you held on to it, and you held, stood there for a minute, and then all of a sudden it gives you back this full report, and inside your packet, you can see this one here, the in-body scan, this is what it would kick back to you. And it told you exactly, which I won't lie, was a little scary, your weight, but then exactly how many pounds of your weight was muscle versus how many pounds were fat? How much fat was in each body part, you know, and stuff like that, and so like I found out one leg was, had more fat than the other leg, and I was unbalanced, and I wasn't thrilled with that, but it is what it is. Uh, but it told you exactly how many pounds were in each leg, each arm, and so you really got a full scan on to see where your body system was. And, um, again, a lot of people were just totally impressed by that and were able to gain helpful knowledge for themselves. And again, this was through Ryan, um, who did this. Then we progressed into the Wellness Bingo, that was our final challenge, and again, that's the final one, you can, you can see my bingo card on there. But we did different things, uh, if you got up and down diagonal, you could do blackout, and that just increased where you got. And every time you participated in something, you would earn points. And so these were just the highlighted challenges or activities, but there were probably fifty different things that you could do within the portal um, to earn points, and your points accumulated from, um, when we started in October till March thirty-first. And so then what had happened is if you were, um, earned five hundred points through the portal, um, you could go ahead and you were qualified for, we qualified for prizes, so again, that's kind of the intrinsic motivation. We had thirty-five people qualify for bronze, and so twenty of those people earned prizes. We had the silver category, which was seven hundred and fifty points, twenty-two people qualified for that, ten of them earned prizes. And then we had the gold, fifteen people earned prizes there, or earned the opportunity, and three earned prizes. Um, and so again, it was kind of intrinsic, and last week when we did the staff breakfast, or the teacher appreciation breakfast and all that stuff, we awarded everybody their prizes and kind of got people to see all the cool things that they had opportunities for. Um, so it went really well, we did a survey back, our, a survey out to the staff to see, um, what they want and what they want moving forward. And so I'm gonna be meeting, Ryan's gonna be meeting with Terry and I to discuss that, so we can continue our work forward for the next year. Um, so that's super exciting, and then also this year, we have Brooke with me. Um, she was my student teacher for third quarter, and she's also been my wellness intern all semester. Um, she's created a monthly newsletter for everybody, which is beautiful and fabulous, she's way more techie than me and can do beautiful creations. Um, she's helped run various programs, she set the teacher appreciation massages with Nicole McKeever. Um, she set up the prizes, her and my good friend Brandon Swanson go ahead and set everything up for me and take care of all that. Um, she does, uh, the wellness plan, which she's gonna talk about shortly for our upcoming year, and she was in charge of creating new wellness breaks for us. So, I'll turn it over her, her, in just a moment, but in your pack, you can see this is, um, what we gave people in the beginning of October, kind of like the pamphlet to kick things off, to explain what the Aspiris wellness stuff was. And then again, it was the, uh, the in-scan and then the, the bingo card, so, all to Brooke.
Alright, so, over my course of the semester, I actually created a wellness plan for next year, it's all taken care of already. So what's gonna happen is every week, there's gonna be like a module that opens up for the staff, and it's gonna include, um, a Wellness Wednesday theme, and then either a wellness activity, wellness challenge, or recipe, so really focusing on the physical and mental health aspect there. And then it'll also include a wellness quote each week, so that's all planned out for next year already, every theme, every challenge, activity and recipe, so. That's what I did over the course of the semester.
And the cool thing is this will be a way, again, to earn points in the system, again, you know, because people do like the challenge of that and things like that, so that's another way. And it'll get, we're hoping this will get people into the portal too, get more activity within the portal, because they're gonna have to go to the portal to find out what's coming up. And also builds unity amongst our district, so like one week we have Hawaiian, well, all the teachers are wearing Hawaiian throughout the district on Wednesday, we're calling it Wellness Wednesday. So to kind of build that community amongst all the staff as well. Um, and so then too, we are hoping to, where we've been talking about, this year it was hard with everything, just, there's just a hard year, so we didn't have the meetings like we needed to, so that's one of our goals next year is to get back into our monthly meeting schedule, and we opened it up to anybody who would have interest, and there's been various people who have indicated interest in joining our wellness committee for next year, so that's super exciting too, to get more feedback and representation from the different buildings, so.
Yeah, and I, and I want to say that I think wellness for the district has come a really long, long way, and especially in the past two years with COVID. Um, I think these, you know, the wellness committee and the events and things going on really help with the mental physical health throughout the district, so, um, so great job, I mean, it's, it's come a long way, and I was at the teacher appreciation breakfast, and everyone seemed super excited about not only the presentation, but just the guys' presence and the prizes and their hard work through the, through the year, so, thank you.
Thank you.
And I, I would just add too, at the same time, we haven't forgotten about the kids, we're still, I mean, that's at the center of everything we do, so we're really modeling behaviors that we want to see in our kids, but we're also working on a, a physical education curriculum this year, so, via teachers are, are working on that, we're hoping to finish that this summer.
Any, any other questions for?
We got one, oh, did you have a question?
Go ahead.
Oh, we got one more thing, just to, you know, make things a little flashy now. We got wellness shirts for all you gentlemen, so, distribute, so you can wear these with pride.
So we're looking for a motion to approve.
Oh, yeah, you're a wellness warrior now.
Sorry, now that we.
So while they're walking around, I'm just gonna look for a motion to approve our wellness policy for the district.
I'll make such a motion.
We got a first.
Second.
And a second, all in favor, please say aye.
You got a aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried, awesome, thank you.
Thank you guys, thank you.
Are they ever gonna get rid of body mass index?
Huh?
Are they ever gonna update the body mass index?
I wish.
Alright, we are going to jump on over to the WIAA twenty-two, twenty-three membership renewal. Um, I think, Keith, I don't, just want to touch base on that quick, did he leave?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're just looking for a, a motion to approve the WIA, uh, working with the WIA.
Do we have a choice?
You don't, we don't have a choice. And it is a, it's a, it's something we have to do every year, and we have to let them know that you've approved, that you're gonna be working with them.
Absolutely, so I'll just look for a motion then.
I'll make that motion.
First and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, motion carried, thank you. Alright, we do have John Thomas here tonight, our safety director, just, um, looks like an emergency drill review.
Uh, yeah, so every year we have to do two unannounced drills as part of our, our safety program. Uh, this year, we did all three schools, Officer Colo and myself, I gave you the report on each of them, I'm just gonna run through it quickly. If you have any questions for each of the schools as we go, we'll stop in between schools and you can feel free to ask. Uh, so Humke, uh, what we did was an unannounced drill, but we modified Humke with the, the age level of our, our little ones. Uh, Officer Colo and myself, uh, went to each classroom, um, unannounced, teachers had no idea, kids had no idea, went in, um, asked them, or told them the scenario, we're gonna practice an emergency lockdown and they show us what it is. So the, the students would go to what they practiced earlier in the year, Officer Colo had trained them, uh, the teachers would show what they would do with that one. And we just went room to room throughout the school, it took us an hour, we weren't locked down for an hour, so when you read that, it, it was a little bit in each classroom. Um, as we did that, um, the staff has been trained, um, on the drill, we did not notify them prior to it, we didn't notify parents prior to it, we had Officer Colo there. Uh, we do use plain language, we use emergency lockdown in this case, no code words with it. Um, it was heard everywhere because we were just in the classroom. Um, some of the notes that we took away from this were, we had a guest teacher in there at the time who was not sure what to do. The, the kids did wonderfully, they went to their spots, they did that, uh, but our guest teacher, um, part of what we should have for the future is, in case of this, here's what our barricades do, here's how to lock the doors. Um, we did have a few staff members who struggled with the proper use of the door barricades. Part of what we'll do is in, uh, in-service training next year is we'll, we'll just refresh them on that, um, and maybe more frequently we'll have them practice the usage of it. The parents aren't formed with the drills, I'll be right, cause we'll present it here at the board. Any questions with Humke? Alright, so then we went on, uh, we did Alexander Middle School, Officer Colo and myself again, uh, same type of setup, except for this one, uh, we did a whole school one. Uh, we made an announcement, we have a drill practice we use over the, the PA system that this is a drill, this is a drill, we will be going into an emergency lockdown. Uh, so that, that one we did is a whole school setting, same thing again, um, the students were not made aware of this, the staff was not made aware of this. And it was really so we could evaluate anything in our system that we. anything in our system that we need to enhance, to make safer for everyone there. As we went through this, same thing, plain language is used, no code words. The announcements were not heard in every location, and that was part of what we found out as a result of this. With, with this one, right after we sent the parents, we just participated in a emergency drill, there was nothing involved in this. Some of the problems we found with the new system that we've recently upgraded at AMS, there's areas where communication was not coming through the speaker, so for instance, the guidance office, the computer lab, library, in locker rooms, comes through the gym, but if they have, it's noisy in there, the volume level wasn't there. The, what we're gonna do this summer is Eric Saylor, we still have this ticket open on it, with the company we use, they're gonna be coming down and they can run a test and put a sound through every room to ensure that it is coming into there. As same with our paging system, that everywhere we want to have it go, it's going. One problem was when we did, I'll call it our school, it comes through the big gym at the high school. So when they scare someone over there.
That's interesting. A little bit we've never done with the.
Yeah, we, and one of our bells does too, so.
Make it interesting.
Well, you wanna all work together.
So one of the follow-ups is with our students as well, we are gonna have to come back with emergency lockdown, preventive lockdown, what it actually should look like in each scenario. One of the things we noticed is since we've gone away from red and yellow, we, we don't have the complete understanding of which one it should be. In an emergency lockdown, following analysis procedures, windows covered, you're getting to the location, you're listed for announcements, you're fleeing.
Barricades too.
Yeah, barricades, preventative is lock your door, cover the window, continue on. Typically, that's like a, any medical situation in a hallway and on there. So we found that when we were red, we actually, people knew that, oh, this is the big one, yellow was, okay, this is the emergency. We did have some areas that were not utilizing the barricades, but all the doors were locked. We checked every door where there could possibly be something. Any questions with AMS? And then we also did the high school, we did that similar situation to the middle school. Unannounced, we used the PA system, Officer Colo and I went around, checked every one of the barricades. This one only took about fifteen minutes and lay. The concerns we had, there was not communication in the auditorium at the current time. Still one of the things that we don't have, the speakers in the upper gym, I said, are connected to the AMS paging system, and they're also very quiet. After this, we did send an email to the building administrators, or, check that. An email will go to building administrators and high school staff with the result of the drill, as well as any concerns. And then we looked for the feedback from teachers, administrators that participated in it. Any questions with the high school?
I just have one question for the middle school.
Sure.
If we do need, you know, some updates or if there's some costs involved, we'll be able to cover for the, the alarm, or the, the sound system that was.
Yeah, that's all I wanted to.
We don't need any updates.
Okay.
I shouldn't say, this should not be a cost, cost one, because this is still an open ticket from the new system that we put in the last year. The company that does it will just have to come down and make the necessary changes on that.
Okay, no, perfect, I was just curious, so.
That was just installed last summer, wasn't it?
Yeah, this, this was, AMS got the new, the simplex system was the, the one that was in there, and it's, all of them now have the digital clock with the speaker is connected to it, should come through everywhere, and it's an engineering one where they'll have to just make a few changes.
So are there speakers in the auditorium at the high school, they just did not work?
No.
Okay.
Not, not through the new system, not the, the clock one. But there's, there's, under the high school system there is, but they're not, it's not coming through there. That's a separate one from the AMS one.
But there are speakers in the auditorium?
I'm not gonna go on a limb on that one. We went and looked for the, we talked to Steve Hirschberg, he thought the new clocks were installed in there that had the speaker, but they're not.
Okay.
So speakers there are part of the sound system, but not necessarily part of the paging system.
So you're following up though?
We're following up, that Officer Colo and I are on, on those ones this summer, we'll get that right.
Okay, well, no, we, we appreciate yours and Colo's work on getting this stuff done, so thank you. I'm just gonna look for a motion now to approve the emergency drill review.
I'll make such a motion.
Second. First and a second, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, none, motion carried for emergency drill review, thank you.
And then I would need a signed copy from a board member for each of the school ones to submit.
Sure.
Okay.
We need that from Pat, as the clerk.
I need that from Pat, as the clerk.
All right, we'll get that going for you. Consent agenda, we have some retirements and resignations. Employment, Ashley Klein, clerical assistant at Humke. Taylor Gallik, if I pronounced that wrong, I'm sorry, first grade teacher at Humke. Jess Tornal, first grade teacher at Humke, Heidi Goodru, school counselor at AMS.
So there's one, there's somebody that's not Jess, what was that?
What was the third one you said? That wasn't on this?
I have a Jess Tornal, or Torn.
Tornal.
Turnout, first grade teacher at Humke.
Just piece of paper here. I'm buying either.
It's not one.
I do have it on.
It wasn't listed here.
What's the, now?
All right, and then we have a coach, Dakota Moody, assistant soccer coach, so congratulations to Dakota and the new hires. Darren, do you wanna read the donations for me tonight?
Absolutely. Jean Michaels donated twelve Silver Eagle dollars for the Rees Award, I believe she does that every year.
She does.
I believe so.
Very nice.
Yeah, it is very nice. The backpack for kids, seventy dollars from Bethlehem Women Admission, forty-five dollars from Sacred Heart Collections, three hundred dollars for Sacred Heart, I don't know what PCW means. Parents, Catholic.
Catholic.
It's a women.
Women, yeah. Irish Council of Catholic Women.
There you go. Boy, I'm embarrassed. Seventy dollars and fifty cents from Club Fifty-One. And then the athletic facility, we received anonymous donation of twenty-five hundred dollars. Nancy Turner donated one thousand dollars, and Natalie Mueller donated five hundred and forty dollars and twenty-eight cents. So again, we're very grateful for that. With that also, that our legacy sign is going to be produced pretty soon, and we'll have all the donors listed up on the building.
Yes.
Very soon.
We're just putting the finishing touches on it, so if you want your, if you want your name on the wall, it's not too late.
Yep.
Wonderful, and thank you again to our donors, I very much appreciate this.
Can we just real quick thank the, our retirements?
Yeah, go ahead.
So John, you wanna?
Sure, I can speak to, yeah, I can speak to Wanda right now. I'm not sure for how many years right now Wanda worked with it, she's actually had a very, she's retiring after many years, I'll start with that. But I can say she's really been a dedicated employee in a number of ways. One of which, she, she is a former secretary within the district, a former classroom teacher, special education teacher, and retiring as an interventionist, and her attention to detail and care for kids will be greatly missed. She's been a wonderful asset for our building, and I really appreciated working with her personally the last six years. The other, the other two ladies, they're moving on to other opportunities, and we wish them well, and I thank Alyssa and Fallon for their service.
Thank you.
And then Keith had mentioned Kyle Yunck, he is, he's our tech ed teacher at the high school, and he is moving home. And you have something?
Yeah, I can just speak, because he's also been at the middle school, and we're just very grateful for his connection with our students. They are excited to be in our tech ed class, this is our first year that we've had tech ed in seven and eight. And so sort of a tall order startup in your curriculum, he nailed it, you know, just sort of set the, and even though we only had him for one year, he set the path to really help get that momentum going, and so we're grateful for his service very much.
Wonderful. Just one question about, did we, we hired two first grade teachers, and one second, one first grade and one second grade teacher left, so.
There's some internal movements, there's some internal movements, so if you look and see right now, like Wanda, interventionist, we had a first grade teacher move into that position, so we had two first grade vacancies. And we currently have a second grade vacancy, we're, we're still seeking to fill.
Okay, I was just, I was wondering if we had a bigger first, if we had a bigger first grade class coming in or something, or, okay.
All right.
Third question, yes.
Gonna move forward then after the donations, minutes, four twelve, it was a regular board meeting. Right now I'm gonna call for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Still moved, sorry.
First and a second, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, none, motion carried. Last bit here, future agenda items, board workshop June ninth. Subject to change though, we will give more than a twenty-four hour notice on that, we have moved to Wednesdays now. And then a regular board meeting is June fourteenth, again, subject to change because we have moved that to Wednesdays as well. Workshops and board meetings are going to Wednesdays, and, let's see. So now, board members are gonna move to the tech ed high school facility for a tour, and after that, we will adjourn into a closed session. So I don't see anything to end the meeting here tonight, so you guys are all free to go, and then we're gonna head over to the high school.